So, you know, something like, a guy friend said-
All right, apologize to everybody. Let's go ahead and get started on our workshop this morning, December 23rd. And our first item on the agenda is the economic development update. And we're getting a little echo in here for some reason.
Good morning, Mayor, members of the council. Matt Anderson, Assistant City Manager. Up today, just want to talk about one specific parcel for a few minutes with you. The address of this is 420 Court Avenue. Most of you will recognize it. The large city-owned parking lot. It's kind of an amalgamation of many parking lots, just east of the Polk County Courthouse, between 4th and 5th on Court. We've gone through requests for proposals and requests for interest before where we've tried to solicit development on this site and for one reason or another haven't been able to get something to come to fruition. We've had development interest from Opus Group out of the Twin Cities and also out of West Des Moines for a mixed-use development on this site that would include retail, market-rate housing, restaurant space, and parking. Since we've put this on the agenda, we've had some other local developer interest in this site as we kind of thought we might. When you dispose of a piece of property, there are a couple of different ways the city council can do it. One is a developer-initiated proposal. That's pretty common. A developer comes to us, says, "Hey, I'd like to build ABC on this site." We go work with that developer. There's a legal mechanism in state code for us to do a developer-initiated proposal. Most recently, you directed staff to work with Mike Whalen on an East Village parcel and Jay Christensen on an East Village parcel for a developer-initiated proposal. The way those work, we'll go to work and negotiate with that one sole developer, come back to you with a package. Hopefully, you will recommend that we move forward with that package. And then there's a certain competitive timeframe that opens up per urban renewal lots, 30 to 45 days, that someone else can come in then and try to beat that proposal. That's pretty common. We've done that on a lot of properties. The E-300 building in the East Village, Jim County's project up here on East Locust, that's a developer-initiated. Another way we can do a project under urban renewal law is through an RFP. So, an RFP, we, or sometimes we even start with a little software landing with an RFQ, which is a request for qualifications. The 7th and Grand Parking Garage is an example of that. We should do a request for qualifications to see who is capable of doing a project of that magnitude. Then we came forward with a request for proposal. Once we narrowed down the most qualified developers, and that process is ongoing right now, in fact, I just received those in our office on Friday. So, that's another way of doing it. Now that we have more than one developer interested in this site, it throws a bit of a wrinkle in. I don't think we're comfortable moving forward with a developer-initiated proposal with other development interest. And if that's the case, we're going to be working this afternoon to try to tweak the agenda item tonight, rather than just directing staff to work with Opus Group on a developer-initiated. I think we're going to open this up to a larger round of developers and see if we could come up with a little competition to come up with the best project possible for the site. There's also a lagging behind this a little bit, but definitely tied, is the redevelopment of the 5th and Walnut Parking Garage, or the 5th and Court Parking Garage, just to the north. You can see that. That's slated for demolition next year. We have a larger goal in mind than just a replacement surface parking lot or replacement parking garage for that site. So, we might take a bit of a step back, take a look at the two sites, and come forward with a formal recommendation on how we develop them in concert with each other. Any questions?
Matt, thank you for that, and I appreciate that very much. Just a couple of comments, maybe. I think it's really important that-
Or I think it's great that we have so much interest in the property. I like that a lot. And we've got a lot of projects that are in the mix, and people are looking at downtown. From my perspective, I want to make sure that, number one, whomever we go forward with, and I'll let you be the judge as to how we put that together, that it's real important that they move along. And I know that there will be people that have multiple projects downtown. I want to make sure, I'm a little bit greedy. I want to make sure we get them all done. And I get a little bit nervous when I see a lot of the same people coming forward and working on all these projects. So, in my mind, I want to make sure that they demonstrate that they can cross the finish line and that we have a time specific as to when different benchmarks need to be met.
Okay, absolutely. Capacity is often an issue when you get into projects, especially projects this size.
Yeah. And so, when they go to look at this site, we're looking at the development of the entire block. We're not just going to be looking at allowing cherry-picking in certain pieces of it, you know, the frontage on Court Avenue, for example.
Absolutely. We don't want to orphan that back to that south 2/3 of the site. It's got to be one cohesive plan, possibly developed in phases, but it must be master planned, yes.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Still a lot of concern about the parking garage itself, especially with all the work that's going on around the courthouse. So, a lot of the people that are somehow associated with legal system seem to think that that lot and providing parking spaces nearby is a necessity. And they hope that we're going to continue to have a lot of available parking at that particular site, especially with the new courthouse going in the old Penny's building.
Yeah, we've been in contact with Polk County, and so we have a number from them, which is the number of spaces that they will need. So, we're trying to determine exactly the best place to put those spaces.
Now, following up on the mayor's comment, I think I've gotten the same emails that you've gotten. It's not just the workers at the courthouse, but it's all of the legal profession because we've gotten a number of emails from different law firms, and they clearly have wrong information.
Okay.
They don't realize that they're going to be replaced. And so, it might be helpful to make sure that the legal profession that, you know, is down there and uses that space on a regular basis, maybe even some signage or something down there.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, we do appreciate the comments about both of these properties and the 5th and Walnut Garage is something that's going to have to come down. So, it presents all these decisions in terms of sizing of that particular parking facility and what form it takes. But it is an opportunity to do mixed use, and I think that's what Matt's talking about. So, we can do the parking, but we got to try to get something taxable on that property. And I would also point out that we have a parking system that, as you know from our presentation a couple of weeks ago, has some vacancies in it. Right down the street from this is the city's Mulberry Garage. We have other garages. These are garages that typically have capacity. So, as we look at these projects coming on and having parking needs, it's in our interest to make sure that we optimize these existing garages that have parking spaces. Now, that may mean that somebody that's used to walk into one facility has to walk to a different facility, but we need to be open and flexible in pursuing those options as they present themselves because we don't want to end up with a parking system that has more spaces and we have needs. So, it'll be an interesting time to sort all this stuff out. But we do understand there's a need at that, at the courthouse project. It's a major project. We want to accommodate the parking there, but there are different venues to do it. We need to optimize those.
Anything else?
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to our next item, which is fiscal year 2015 budget planning, solid waste enterprise.
Good morning, Mayor, councilmembers. Scott Sanders, Finance Director. This morning's topic is solid waste enterprise fund, planning for next year's budget. This is one of the more straightforward utility or enterprise funds at the city. So, I really only have about four slides. We'll be able to get through this fairly quickly. This is a reminder, our solid waste is run by the Department of Public Works, and they provide trash, yard waste, recyclable collections. 64,000 households are served. The fund also supports the scrub program, property cleanups, and the clean team. Municipal collections are provided to the parks, our buildings at the city, as well as the airport and our sister agency, the WRA. Staffing at this time is about 50 full-time positions. Looking at the current year's budget and looking forward to the 2015, the beginning balances are very healthy. We have revenues of just over $12 million and operating expenses at just under $12 million a year. So, you'll see in the current year, we've got a surplus plan that'll take us to nearly $7 million in total reserve funds, with the $1 million set aside as a reserve in case there are any cleanup issues necessary. We saw that as a prudent number to keep in the balances. And then, we have additional balance above that that we can utilize, or that we can purchase the larger vehicles, the collection vehicles, which are expensive. We're approaching $300,000 per vehicle to replace those. So, in '15, you'll see that the expenditures go up to about $13,700,000. That figure is because we are purchasing eight vehicles. And so, if we were not doing that, or we were doing fewer vehicles, we could still have another surplus. But the idea here is to purposely spend down the balance with cash purchases of vehicles. Very healthy fund. It will allow us, quite honestly, as we look at lease purchase, which are still very low rates on the lease side, a year from now, we'll be looking at the rate structure and see if there's actually an opportunity to possibly lower the solid waste rates. But that'll depend on the vehicle purchase plan that'll get, we'll finalize that over the next 12 months. So, I do anticipate that we'll have lots of options with the way this utility's performing very well.
Can I ask a quick question here, or you want to wait till the end?
Really, that's just about it. So, go ahead.
Okay, so, I see the amended '14 budget, and I see the recommended '15 budget, and I see that we've got a shortfall of about $1,004,000 in the operations revenues minus the expenditures. And yet, we're saying we have a healthy balance. Do you see that moving forward? Or is it going to be some years because we're going to buy less stuff, we'll continue with a solid positive flow? Because, I mean, that's almost a 10% short of, or a little more than that, of revenues on your expenditures there.
Right. So, what you're seeing there is a $1.4 million deficit in '15.
Right.
We have $2.2 million in vehicles being paid with cash. And obviously, we could delay some of those vehicles if we want, if absolutely necessary. But we've got an aging vehicle inventory. So, while we want to try and spread some of those purchases out over the next five years, we're also looking at new technology within those vehicles, whether they're side voters, in-voters. I could defer to Public Works on those questions. But I guess the key here is operationally, we're still operating this utility at a surplus. And it's just a capital replacement plan that will see deficits-
For five years?
Well, again-
Based on what you just said?
With the $6 million in excess balance, it makes sense to pull down with cash as opposed to using lease purchase entirely.
No, I understand.
And so, we'll probably do a little bit more of that next year. But then, what we'll do, and the key here is to have a plan, a five-year plan, that maybe the leases start to kick in instead of using cash in the second or third year. And once we get comfortable with what that plan looks like long-term, we can look at the rate structure and make a determination if we still have the right rate for the utility customers.
Okay, thank you.
Does that make sense?
So, this is due to an exceptional number of vehicles being purchased. What is the average per year? Do you know, three or four?
Well, that was the difficult part because we want to smooth it out. We had quite a few purchased 10 years ago, or nine, eight years ago, in a large grouping, and we want to spread those out a little bit more.
Yeah, they're all coming at once, yeah.
Yeah.
So, we're not looking at a rate increase? This is-
Absolutely not, no. And in fact, again, over the next year for the 2016 budget, we'll be, there will be possibilities of actually lowering the rate. We have to work through the lease arrangements first.
Boy, that would be awesome.
We'll see how it turns out. The thing we have between now and then is our master, our master lease agreement needs to be RFP'd again over the next year. And so, I want to make sure I get comfortable with what those terms are with our new master lease program over the next year. And that way, I can get comfortable with what the five-year plan would look like. And so, no rate change, the revenue remains stable. Obviously, the Public Works Department continues to look at efficiencies with the technology that's available. You know, years ago, we went from two operators to one. There's potentially some other opportunities for efficiencies by moving to different trucks as well. So, they'll continue to look at that as well. That's it.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
All right, our next item, the agenda this morning, is a summary of the results from the 2013 Citizen and Business Satisfaction Survey. Survey is administered every two years to over 800 households and more than 400 businesses citywide. ETC is going to make the presentation.
Mayor, members of the council, I'm Chris Tatham. It's great to be back and have some good news and also some items to kind of let you see what residents think that has changed since the last time we did the survey. What I'm going to do today is kind of walk you through the findings. And for those of you who may not remember us, I guess I forgot my introduction, our firm specializes in helping local governments get input from residents and businesses to make better decisions. You oftentimes have public hearings, and you usually only hear from the people who don't like how you're providing services, or people who want to change things, which doesn't necessarily reflect the overall opinion of the residents that you're serving. So, a survey like this really helps you assess how you're doing based on the entire community's perception. I look at it oftentimes like doing a well-health physical. You go see your doctor once in a while just to make sure you're doing okay, and even if things haven't changed, it's good to know that you're still in pretty good shape. And that's what we're going to find out for this year's survey, is that overall things for Des Moines are in pretty good shape. I'm going to briefly walk through the results of the resident survey. I'm also going to go through the business survey. We also have a lot of appendices that will be provided later with cross-tabulations and maps. I'm not going to spend today going through those, but just want to kind of give you the highlights of what we found. As far as the resident survey results, the survey is set up to give you an objective assessment for residents, is to let you see what their priorities are, what you see objectively, how well they think you're delivering services. We also have comparisons in the report to let you see how Des Moines is doing compared to other communities. And overall, you're doing very well, which I'll share with you just a little bit. As far as the methodology, we use the same methodology this year that we've used in previous years. The survey is administered to a random sample of at least 800 residents. We actually select a total of 2,400 households in the city to receive the survey. They're each mailed a survey. We then do follow-up by phone until we get at least 800. We actually had 870, so the response rate continues to be very strong in the city. The results aren't perfect, but they have an accuracy of about plus or minus 3.3% at the 95% level of confidence. So, if you did the survey 100 times, we get these same results within about 3% or 4% each time. As far as the major findings, this is really with the takeaway. So, if you had breakfast and you want to remember three hours later what the key things were, these are them. Bottom line is the residents are generally satisfied and continue to be satisfied with how well the city provides its services. There have not been a lot of significant changes compared to two years ago. The city continues to set the standard for service delivery in a number of areas. And as far as things to take a look at as you move forward, continuing to find ways to address the issue about minimizing the city's reliance on property taxes. What we found through this year's research and looking at that, a lot of it has to do with perceptions of infrastructure. In other words, those who believe infrastructure is in good condition tend to give better value and have less concern about the reliance on property taxes than those who are concerned about the condition of the city's infrastructure. I think that's a real important thing to move forward. It's not necessarily what the property tax rate is, but people assessing what value they're getting. And we've done surveys like this now for hundreds of communities across the United States. And what I find is communities where residents feel good about streets and the condition of infrastructure tend to give better ratings for value. And I see a lot of that in your data, and I'll show you that in just a little bit. In addition, continue to emphasize public safety. This is a safe community, and it's something that's also very important to businesses as well. As far as the major findings this year, when we look at the survey results, we ask residents to rate a number of items on a scale of 1 to 5. Fours and fives are positives or satisfied ratings. They're shown in blue. Negative ratings are dissatisfied ratings or ones and twos, and they're shown in red. And you see generally, for pretty much all the major categories, or what I consider to be kind of the strategic areas that were assessed, the city performs very, very well. You'll notice the second to bottom one, overall quality of city services, 64% of residents give positive ratings. You'll see fewer than 20% give negative ratings. So, for every person you hear complain about the quality of city services, you've got three or four people who actually feel real good about how you're doing. You'll even see value for tax dollars, which rates lower at about 44%. That's still almost double the number of people who are giving you negative ratings. So, all in all, people tend to look at the city very favorably. Quality of life and other indicators rated very, very well. In addition, we have some kind of major issues or service areas that are assessed on the survey. And you'll see the desirability of community for youth and families at the top of the chart. Your perceptions of your downtown rate very strongly, as well as public safety, and even things like learning opportunities all rate very, very well. I won't read everything, but as you come down through the list, you'll see that issue about reliance on property tax funding is one of the areas residents have concerns about in the past, which is one of the reasons we did more research into that this year. And that's where I found that there was a strong relationship with that and dissatisfaction with issues related to infrastructure maintenance as well. And you'll see that ties into the overall quality of community assets. Part of that question includes people's perceptions of things like streets, buildings, bridges, and other infrastructure in the community. But again, all in all, the ratings continue to look very, very good. When we see how people's perceptions of the appearance of private property in their neighborhood has changed, overall statistically, it's not a significant change, but you'll see it is up slightly from 73% saying yes last time to 75% saying yes this time. In addition, when people are asked what has happened with their neighborhood over the past five years, again, not a significant change, but it's gone up slightly from 46% to 47%. So, all in all, when we look at the key things in the survey that are designed to assess how well you're doing at a big global picture level, the city continues to do very well and has improved in a few areas. As far as how you stack up to other cities of similar size across the country, in most of the areas that we assessed, you're actually leading the pack. In fact, when it comes to the overall quality of customer service from employees, you can see you rate significantly better. Downtown also rates significantly better. And I do want to emphasize how important it is to your customer service. Because there are some concerns about the condition of infrastructure, and we'll see here in a second, the perceptions of value are a concern, I think the brand of the city, which is probably a reflection of the employees and the personal contact that residents have when they interact with the city, offsets any negatives that would otherwise be caused by those concerns. And so, you see that much better. Efforts to communicate with residents, you may notice, is about average compared to the national and also the medium-sized city average, but that was an area you used to lag significantly behind in the national comparisons when we first started doing the survey. As far as when it comes to overall quality of city services, you'll see that rates up significantly better, so does quality of life and image. But you'll see value rates a little bit lower. It's just borderline as far as being statistically significant. It's three points below the national average, but actually a little bit lower than the median city average. And like I pointed out before, I think one of the key things is the perception of infrastructure issues. That's going to be your top priority as far as investment, and there's very strong correlation in the data between what people perceive as being good value and their perception of the condition of the infrastructure in the community. But all in all, again, the city does very well. And this surprises me. I mentioned this to your staff last week. I almost never see the quality of city services be better than the national average significantly and the value be below unless the city has an extremely strong brand. So, I think at the end of the day, the fact that people do have some concerns about infrastructure, that is offset by the fact that people have a very high opinion in general of city employees' quality of services you provide. And I think that's overcome what would otherwise be a much more challenging environment in which to work. When it comes to perceptions of safety, you see most people feel much safer here than they do in other parts of the country. When it comes to fire services, you see your fire safety education, your inspection programs rate much better than most other communities around the country. When it comes to parks and recreation, your walking and biking trail system is off the chart. Quality of your pools is off the chart compared to other communities. But you see a number of parks is about average with the national average, but a little lower than the medium-sized community average at 76%. The biggest area you can see concerns are, is what I mentioned before, is when it comes to public works issues, mainly streets. You see both major city streets and streets in neighborhoods are below the national and mid-sized city average. Condition of sidewalks, also trails, and you can see maintenance of traffic signals and street signs. Almost every area that was assessed was below the national average, and you can see the North Central U.S. average on here, you also rank below that. And the reason we put that on there is the infrastructure ratings tend to be lower for communities in the North Central part of the United States than they are in the Southern part of the United States because of the winters. And so, I wanted you to know that this isn't just because you're a northern community with a daylight today where you freeze and thaw. You actually are trailing other communities with similar environments as far as weather and so forth. When it comes to the overall satisfaction, though, with your services that you deliver on the public safety side, garbage crouching and recycling are really off the charts. Sanitary sewer system, though, is one area where you do lag significantly behind other communities. Traffic flow generally rates a little better than other communities in the North Central part of the U.S. as well. Your storm sewer and yard waste were about average when we looked at them.
Is it made clear when you're doing this that there's a difference between the storm sewers and sanitary sewers?
To some extent. Not everybody understands that. So, when you see some of these comparisons, but it's the same question everywhere around the country. So, if, you know, someone doesn't quite get that, we typically explain if someone asks that what has to do with rainwater and flooding, and the other has to do with what goes down your drains. But still, that doesn't mean 100% of people will get it. But the question is the same everywhere we ask it. So, that makes the comparison valid, even if it is misinterpreted by some people. When it comes to community development services, your overall code enforcement, pretty much on par with other communities. on par with other communities. But you can see your planning for growth is actually much better than other communities around the country. So all in all, in most areas, really with the exception of kind of the condition of streets and infrastructure and sanitary sewers, you really are setting the standard for most other communities. Last thing is your communication area, and this is an area you've made tremendous progress on. You'll see the availability of information and how well you're kept informed of local issues are actually pretty much on par with other communities. This was an area you were significantly below other communities several years ago. But you'll see cable television and website trail the national and the mid-sized community average. But your overall level of public involvement is about the same as other mid-sized cities across the country. As far as how things have changed over the last couple of years, there really were not a lot of significant differences in the survey. So I just highlighted some of the most notable ones here. Flood protection was up significantly from 2011. As a perception that you're a welcoming community for diverse backgrounds, I know you've had some initiatives in the diverse city area promoting that, that's up significantly. Your efforts to plan for growth, redevelopment, and making this a safe place for people to bike on the streets, all went up significantly compared to the results in 2011. Areas that decreased, the hours, libraries are open, water quality, taking water quality improvements. Value for city taxes, snow removal on major streets and hours of bus operation also saw decreases compared to two years ago.
Water quality improvements, is that drinking water, is that stream water?
You typically reflect this, what's going on with stream water. In other words, what's happening in your rivers and streams. But again, there's some people may interpret that somewhat differently. But we asked it the same way two years ago, so the fact whether it went up or down, it was the same question that we had.
Can you go back to the bus operation, please? That one really surprises me since we've increased hours.
But it could be that people's expectations are rising faster than you've delivered service, or it could also be a function of where service is provided. So, you know, that's one of those things is, you know, this is a function of satisfaction. And sometimes we'll find that levels of service rise or fall, but it's really about what people are expecting. So in some cases, you can actually decrease service, see expectation or see satisfaction go up if people expect less. And so we know that when the recession hit, a number of communities over-told residents that they were going to do fewer services than they actually did. So people's expectations, for example, for some services dropped more. In other words, they thought the pools were going to be closed, then they weren't closed. So their expectations had dropped and then they were more satisfied. And so it could be a function of you were talking about expanding hours, but then the hours weren't expanded to the level people had hoped. You might have raised expectations, and so even though you raised the hours of operations, the change in operations didn't meet the expectations that were set. And that's what I would guess, if you've actually increased it, is expectations have risen faster than your ability to meet those expectations.
Even though we've increased, I hate to say, still remember back when they were open the full week.
Yeah.
And they still would like to have that, but, you know, we know what's happened.
So that's probably, in other words, even though you've done more, the expectation is higher. And that's probably what you're seeing there.
Did you ask as part of these questions, where there's decreases in satisfaction, what they would like to see happen so that it would be an increase?
No, we don't do that as part of this, but one of this survey is more a higher level to let you know, well, of the hundreds of services you provide, how have things changed? So if you do want to do more research or better understand that, you could do some follow-up studies or focus groups, but in a way you can target what you're studying rather than try to do that with every service you provide. So if there isn't, we don't understand from this survey why necessarily people are more or less satisfied, we just know that they've changed. And it could be a function of changes in service level or changing expectations. As far as the priorities for investment as you move forward, the biggest issue that people are concerned about has to do with the reliance on property tax funding. It's followed by the overall quality of your community assets, which are pretty much your streets, your bridges, and other infrastructure. Public safety sort of rounds out the top three. And from looking at the data, as I've mentioned a few times now, this issue about reliance on property tax funding really seems to be strongly related to how well you're taking care of your infrastructure. In other words, the fact that your infrastructure rates a little bit lower than the national average when we look at the condition of your streets and sidewalks, we see the perception of value or is a little bit lower here than we see in other communities. I don't necessarily know that if it's, you have to lower your tax rate, but I think people want to see better quality infrastructure. And that's, I think, what's really driving this. So, you know, finding other sources, I know you're looking at sales taxes and other options, I think that's good. But I think the most important thing to really address this issue as you go forward is to improve the condition of the infrastructure in the city. I think that will strongly address both of the top two issues here. Obviously, investments in infrastructure will improve the quality of community assets, but I think it'll address people's concerns about the reliance on property tax funding as well, given the relationships we see in the data. As far as the business survey is concerned, it was administered the same way we conducted it in 2011. We selected a random sample of 1,200 businesses in the city to receive the survey. Our goal was to get at least one in three to complete it. We actually had 401 complete it by combination of mail and phone. We typically targeted a senior manager, the owner, as far as the telephone follow-ups, as far as getting folks to participate in the survey. Overall, accuracy is about plus or minus 5% at the 95% level of confidence. So it's a very good indicator of how things have changed since the last survey was conducted. When we look at the trends on the business survey, what shows on here are the changes from 2008, which is in red, 2011 is in yellow, and 2013 is in blue. And this is the percentage of residents who gave positive ratings. And you'll notice that there weren't a lot of significant changes since 2011. Economic development actually went up eight points from 51 to 59. Building permits dropped slightly from 56 to 50. But overall, things stayed about the same. But if you look at the long-term trend dating back to 2008, which was really at the heart of the recession, most areas have improved. And so I think the city is on the right course when it comes to business perceptions of the city. When we look at some of the performance of specific units within the city government, you can see that there were some changes. Economic Development Office was up nine, or excuse me, 11 points from 2011, so definitely doing something right there. Construction and building permits inspection, you can see, was up six points from the last survey as well. So I think you're doing some good things. Library service was down, and you can see most of the other areas stayed about the same compared to the last survey. As far as the perceptions of attitudes and the labor force in the community, those have improved in most areas. You can see the overall availability of labor was down from 2011, but it's still up for the long-term trend. You can see the stability, quality of labor, productivity of the workforce, and attitude of employees are all still higher now than they were in 2008, even though we saw a couple minor decreases in labor and the productivity of the workforce. When it comes to the most important city services, the businesses, these aren't a real surprise. I tend to see similar results throughout the country. Police is at the top of the list, followed by street maintenance, fire services. You see water and sewer services round out the top four, actually picked by more people as the number-one issue or more businesses as the number-one issue. That is a little unusual from my perspective. So I'm not sure what's driving that, but you did have a very high percentage of businesses pick that as their first choice. And you can see economic development sort of rounds out the top five. When it comes to the reasons businesses decided to locate in Des Moines, your utilities and infrastructure, telecommunications at the top of the list, followed by low crime, quality of streets, and the attitude of local government toward business, along with the image, all had at least 90% of the respondents say it was important. You'll notice that the low crime rate, attitude of local government to business, and your infrastructure items were the top three when it comes to percentage, depicted as extremely important, as an extremely important reason for moving to the city. When it looks how people's perception, businesses' perceptions of the city have changed with regard to the city being a business-friendly community, you'll see it's up five points from 2011. You've gone from 63% to 68%. When we also asked them what they thought about the city's ability to offer adequate services to entrepreneurs in the city, that's also up 5% from 2011, from 53% to 58%. So all in all, the data suggests that the business community continues to feel very, very good about the city, and you're moving in the right direction. So putting it all together, really when we look at all of the data from both the resident and the business community, eight out of 10 residents were satisfied with the quality of life in the city, although there weren't a lot of changes in the survey from last time. The overall indicators for most of the areas that are considered to be the strategic indicators of the health of the city continue to rate very high. The city's setting the standard, and most of the areas that were assessed with the quality of service delivery. The biggest exceptions have to do with infrastructure-related issues, and your sanitary sewer services rate significantly below. And as I said, as you move forward, I really think one of the keys will be is what you do with the infrastructure condition, I think, will relate to people's perception of value, which will ultimately impact how concerned they are about your reliance on property taxes. And I think as the infrastructure condition improves, that will be a way to minimize the concern about property tax reliance. So I don't know if anyone has any questions, but would certainly be happy to answer them while I'm here.
Counsel?
Oh.
Christine?
We had talked, and I can't remember if it was actually one of the questions, but was there, were there any questions on franchise fee?
I don't recall. I don't, off the top of my head. Are you thinking for the business survey?
Just to, you know, how do people look at that?
I know at one time, I don't believe that we ended up keeping some of those details. I can double-check, I just don't remember.
Okay, if you could, I'd appreciate that. And then will we get copies of the reports broken down by Ward?
Yeah, it'll be, actually, yeah, we can do that for you. I don't know if we were planning to do it by Ward, but we can, so we should have a big enough sample size.
And when do we get those hard copies?
You'll get those probably middle of January. I'm headed out of the country in a couple of days, and so I'll be back around the 10th of January, so shortly after that. So you'll also, part of that, you'll have maps, I think, so you'll actually be able to see how people in different parts of the city rated different services. There'll be cross tabs that actually show how people, based on their demographic profile, based on income and things like that, how they rated different services as well.
Very good. Thank you.
Carl?
Yes, I'm curious, the survey, I assume is a template, you asked the same questions the same way for all the communities. Were there custom questions prepared for Des Moines that...
Yeah, your survey has core questions that we ask in many communities. That's why we don't show comparisons for everything in the survey, because there are a number of questions that are unique to Des Moines.
Could you just give me an example, one or two of those questions?
Your property tax reliance is something we don't ask in other communities, which is why I have to go to other questions to help interpret it. So when I've been here in the past, I've pointed that issue out, but I haven't been able to really put my finger on what I think the driving factors are. But now that we actually have several periods of data, and I can look at the changes in your value ratings, which are asked in other communities, and the changes in your infrastructure as well, that's why I'm starting to see that relationship that I wasn't able to see in the past.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Laurie Graham couldn't be here today. She's been coordinating this project with Mr. Tatham. She's ill today, but I just wanted to mention her name. She's done good work here. This comment about the reliance on the property tax is a really interesting one to me. It has been a message that this council has stressed with the community for really a long time. And the tie that Chris is making between that observation and the condition of our infrastructure is a powerful one. And it really does, I think, point a way for you all to think about in terms of other revenue sources and how those revenue sources might be used to address the infrastructure needs. So I find that to be a really compelling, interesting result out of this particular report. The other thing I wanted to mention to councilmembers, particularly Bill and Carl, is that every year we produce a report which summarizes all these results. It's made available to the public. You might recall, it has great art in it, so there's art that sort of sells the message, if you will. That will be done again this year. It's been very, very popular. We've kept those for all of the previous surveys that have been done. So we've got a nice sort of library that outlines the results of the survey. It is great information and one that we use, and we try to integrate as best we can into the budget preparation process. It gives us great guidance and ultimately the council and the public guidance in terms of how you allocate your dollars. It's really a very helpful tool. And although other cities do that, I don't think most cities do this sort of thing. But it's something that council has been interested in maintaining over the years. And now you've got a great sort of history of data, which is very, very valuable to us, so appreciate the work.
You know, one thing that we've not done in the past that I believe would be very informative is to provide this information as summary to our legislative delegation, particularly when we're talking about alternative revenue and the infrastructure issues. I think this would really be a positive message to give them, to let them understand that you've got all of these citizens that have ranked this as number one, and it's not just us as elected officials having that dialogue with them. It's clearly an interest of our citizens within the community.
It's really a great point, because you're, in effect, put in the position by the laws in the state of Iowa that you really don't have recourse. Your infrastructure is clearly something that needs more investment, but you're frankly not given the tools to do anything about it. You've got to pull it out of the property tax, our tax rates are high. You've maxed out that resource, in my view. So you're really backs against the wall here. And it is a finding that's germane to the legislature and the state, and they ought to take a look at this sort of thing, because it certainly points a direction for the future in terms of the kind of tools that you're going to need to make the city work long-term.
Rick, I think one of the problems with property tax is that there's some other entities in Polk County that tax also, and when the residents receive their tax bill and they see the taxes go up, they unfairly blame it all on the city of Des Moines. And I think that we need to find a way, without really slapping our friends in the face, but we need to get it out to our residents, that that tax bill includes some other taxing entities too.
Good point.
Communication. All right, anything else?
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Chris. Travel safely.
Thanks.
All right.
I love being in the city this morning.
It is 8:20. Let's open it up at this moment for public comment. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to make comment on anything that we have presented here this morning? Seeing none. There is a city council meeting this evening and the last one of the year, and hope that you all be here and enjoy every last minute of it. Till then, we'll see you. This meeting is adjourned.